I'd like to call this meeting of the Silver Falls School Board to order. And please note attendance, Denise. Just a few discussion items that we'll work on our own tonight. State school fund estimate, the school year 2016-17. I take it this is Andy and Steve?
Yeah, I'll let Steve be trying to make that here. Steve can give you enough of that information. So Steve is handing, go ahead, if you want to hand that around. Handing around some information that we'll take a little, some interpretation on from Steve here in just a moment, but just in a quick summary, recall that the school funding is really, of course, occurs over the, a period of about a three-year cycle. We operate based upon estimates, based upon a number of things, and then actual figures that we receive and reconciliation that occurs a year later. So by the time we begin estimating and full reconciliation, it really has three years to come. And so the, we receive estimates a couple of, four times a year, is that right? Call that many? Four times a year?
A few times a year.
A few times a year.
By the time the year is actually closing, it probably goes to six for that piece of the year.
And then those estimates are based upon a number of variables. So what I want to draw your attention to is the poverty calculation, which is used to determine the estimates for school districts for funding for, for the next year. And we are in, by the way, are budgeting for the second year of a biennium, and we truly believe that we would have some sense of confidence and security as we're moving to this, into the second year. While I think there is some belief in that, we have been, we have been thrown some information that has caused us a little bit of concern, and that's an adjustment specific to the poverty calculation for school districts across the state of Oregon. And so I'm going to turn it over to Steve at this point, and we do a better job of sharing with you what has occurred about two years ago with the poverty calculation and how that applies directly to this district today, which unfortunately is not the news we record as well.
Yes, so March, ODE submitted their first state school fund estimate for 1617. And last week they just gave us our first update for the 1516 school year, the first one we've had since December. And they, so we're, as you know, we're funded for our base enrollment, and of course, kindergarten account is 1.0 FTE starting this year. So between our schools and the charter school, the charter school funding flows through, through our district and then out to the charter school. We have about 3,800 students with kindergarten count as a whole. By the time you get to our extended ADMW, which there's ADM, average daily membership, and then average daily membership weighted, which includes the different weighting factors that they, that they have. So we have weighting for IEP up to 11%, and they do have a little bit of overage above that. So IEP is Individual Life Education Plans, which are specialized students. That counts as an additional 1.0 weighting. We have Pregnant Parenting Weighting, which is 1.0. ESL Weighting, which is additional, additional 0.5 weighting. And then there's some other factors, which, and we talked about poverty is another big one. And that's not one that we can really, really know what that's going to be. You get an additional 0.25 weighting for each poverty student in the district. So by the time we get done with weighting, we go from about 3,800 kids to an ADMW of 4,400, 4,500, or what we thought would be closer to 4,600. And then you take that amount as the amount per ADMW that the state gives you, which will be close to $7,500 per ADMW this year. So when they came out with their first estimate for 1617, we were using a weighted, a poverty weight of about 170, excuse me, 175, which is what our current 1516 estimate is based on. And for 1415, we were at a weight of 165. So there's been a significant change in what, in what data they use and how frequently they're going to use it for poverty. I think you may recall, Wally, and maybe from, Tom, from a couple of years ago during the 2013 legislative session, this was a big deal. In the past, the state, or ODE has only used the once every 10-year US Census data, so for 2000, 2010, for example, and used that metric for state school fund years, every year for that, that decade. So our, for example, our poverty weight would have been the same percentage of enrollment, for example, over the course of that whole 10-year period. So you never really had to worry about that number. Well, they wanted to more accurately reflect what was going on community by community and update that more than once every 10 years, which made sense. So they changed the ORS and state, for state school fund around what they're going to use for that metric. And now they're using a, a metric called the SAPI data. It's on the top of your spreadsheet there, SKI, PI, so that's for small area income population, I don't remember what the E was. But that is a metric, that is data that is updated every year by the US Census Bureau. It's a different, it's a different data set that they use, and it's based on the income tax returns and so forth. And so when this, when this, when this, when they originally went to this data, the first state school fund year applied to was 2014-15. So we actually, Silver Falls School District jumped, we, this district was initially a benefactor of the new data. We jumped from 123.39 poverty weights in state school fund year 1314 up to 164.48 in 1415. So we jumped 40 weights, which is significant. And that's what 1516 measure was based on, also 1617. But what they do now with this new data, since it comes out every January, the January 2016 SAPI data, which is based on 2014, jumped us back down 30%. So the sheet that I put together, when I studied the data on the US Census Bureau site, and you can see that our district in this comparative analysis of about 20 school districts was hit the hardest, we fell about 28.4%. So what, what they're saying is the SAPI data that came out in January 2015, which was based on calendar year 2013, went, we went from 700 students in poverty, which would have been about 18.1% of our population, down to 500. So if you take the difference of 200 and multiply it by the 0.25 that they give us on the weight, that's 50 weights times $7,500, plus $375,000 impact. And it's not just in 1617, they're applying the 2014 SAPI data back to our 2015-16 year. So essentially, it's about a three-quarter of a million-dollar impact for the 1517 biennium. So what's happened here is what I believe to be an unintended consequence. They've essentially gone from one updated metric every 10 years, so one look for 10 years' worth of school funding, to essentially what would be three looks for every state school fund year. Because at any given time, we have three years open at any given time. So right now, our 1415 year is still open until our May reconciliation. You may recall that the district received a positive adjustment last May of over $400,000, which helped lead to a bigger surplus last year than we thought, which is great. Well, part of it had to do with the fact that our, our poverty rating hit positive way last year with the 2013 SAPI data. But fortunately, this SAPI data, the way that the rule changed, the way it was originally changed, would have applied back to 1415 as well. But Michael Elliott, the state school fund coordinator at ODE, went to the State Board of Education last fall, and the State Board approved having the SAPI data only, only hit a state school fund twice. So, so the 1415 data, which was the higher number for 1415 state school fund year, will still be based on 2013 and not 2014. So that prevented it from being a triple hit. So the way they originally passed it is that every January's data would apply to any open year. So this is where it gets a little tricky. So under the original intent, it would have hit us for 1415, 1516, and 1617, because all the years that are open. But now it's only two looks per year, so it normally hit for 1516, 1617. So when I talked to Michael at the state, there's talk at the department about them going back to the State Board of Education once again and saying, we're only going to apply one years' worth of SAPI data to each state school fund year. So essentially, ratcheted from potentially three looks for every state school fund year, or they have it at two now, down to one. So there's a small hope that there may be some sort of a adjustment to what's happened here as far as this SAPI data for the 1516 year. Because as you know, we're over eight months into this school year and have, you know, $375,000 pulled out from us, you know, when we're almost done with the school year, based on this new data measure. I don't think that was very intended. Now, service school districts with this new data went up, and service school districts went down. That's why I did this study. The way that this data comes in, it basically is concentrated down to a county level. So essentially, this doesn't necessarily reflect exactly what's happening in our district, but I think when you look around this, we would, we would agree that, you know, our poverty rate hasn't dropped by 30%. Our free and reduced numbers are still relatively flat. And there's other metrics, and just by observation, you look around, this doesn't reflect, but it comes basically through the counties. So basically, all districts, school districts within a county are either going up or going down at the same time. So I studied L.A., and I studied Marion, and I studied Monmouth, for example, and all the, I think two districts within those three counties went down, and pretty significantly now. And so, so this has caused, it's a pretty, it's a material issue, I believe. It's a, it was a well-intended adjustment to the state school fund, the fact that they had access to annually updated data, but to basically, it's created another fallout element within the state school fund. When you, when you, when you go to the state school fund, and we, we think about, are the Zari enrollment state one? Can the economy handle the, will the economy produce the revenue for the budget that they pass so that we can give the amount per student that we were promised the whole biennium? And then the first, because those are kind of the big three. Well, now all of a sudden, we have to worry about this poverty adjustment, and we have to worry about it hitting two years at the same time. I mean, so anyway, I know that gets a little into the weeds, but I really wanted you to understand, you know, I've done a lot of research on this, and I talked to a business manager at Springfield, as you see on this list, I think they were the next closest hit, they were 22.5% down. And we're actually having a meeting this week down there with the L.A. and Siskiyou County Superintendents, and we're going to be doing the same up here, because it's an issue that I think needs attention, you know, at the state level.
So we're bringing your attention today, just to create the awareness right now, because we're about to begin the budgeting process on April 21st, and with your first meeting, our organizational meeting. And, you know, clearly, this is, this is having an impact on, on what our budgets will look like for next year. I think we've, we've been in worse conditions, positions in the past, especially when the economy's gone sour. However, this one, we have to be attentive to, and so we are asking the principals to pare back their budgets somewhat in order to meet this, this need. The other piece that I think is important to share is that, is that part of our, our fund balance that has grown over the last couple of years, based upon the description that Steve has provided you, I think lends itself somewhat to the reality that we've had some revenue generated in this school district based upon data that's now two years old, that the state is now, based upon this new poverty calculation, is saying was not as accurate as they had anticipated, because they were sure to be using that at the time, to give us indication that the poverty calculation was, was accurate. So part of my concern, and actually, we're meeting with all the Marion County Superintendents this Thursday at the district office, to help address this with, with ODE and with the State Board, is to say, you know, we have enough unpredictability as it is with the state school fund, and to have now this additional unpredictability with, with the poverty piece is really unfortunate, especially when at the time, with the poverty count that occurred two years ago, we were, we were told that it would add to the confidence built within the poverty, the poverty calculation, within the formula. And that's actually a full contrast with what we're experiencing. So, you know, if this is, is maybe helping to establish a standard for, for the poverty calculation, and we don't have, ever have to have this conversation again, well, then I suppose there's some benefit to that, looking into the future, two or three years down the road. But I can't sit here in front of you and predictably say that the poverty calculation isn't going to hit a peak or a valley again over the course of the next few years, simply because we don't know. So that's one of the stronger messages that we'll be sending to ODE, is through the second year of a biennium, where we believe we had some confidence in the amount of funding that we had. We have our COLA adjustments, we know what our insurance increases are, we know what our enrollment is essentially, we know what our staffing is, all of these sort of constants that we can accurately predict. And then we have something like the poverty calculation that's now out of our control, and I'm so certain that's, you know, that fits within the total control of what the Department of Education is sharing with us. So lots of school districts that are a little concerned about this. So that's the awareness I wanted to create with you. So we'll be, you'll still be having budget proposals come to you in a few weeks, but they'll be pared down as compared to what we were hoping to do.
Andy, what has our, what has our free and reduced lunch count done lately? Has it, has the percentage gone up or down, stayed the same?
It's pretty relatively flat. District-wide, it's around, let's say, 42% to 45% is right there. Some tenet areas have gone down.
Yes.
Others have gone up. Eugene field has gone up, you know, three or four percent.
Yeah, but so that count.
It stays flat.
So that, that indicator, our, our simple count says it should have stayed the same. Are other, are other districts, Steve, experiencing that too, that they're?
Oh, yeah, these numbers are way out of what, out of bounds in terms of what, what people think. But, you know, as Michael at ODE pointed out, he said, you know, the federal poverty rates, 29,000 or whatever, family now is making more than 30, and they were at 20. I mean, somebody think they might just be just out, there might be more families just outside the parameters of less, you know, under these metrics.
Right.
That's what I was going to ask, the metric for this versus our free reducer.
Totally, yeah. Absolutely. And to put it in perspective, so 375,000 on one year, you know, we were projected to bring in about 33.5 million in total formula revenue, which includes the state's contribution, our property taxes, the common school fund, et cetera. It's over 90% of our general fund revenue.
Are they?
You know, it's about, that's, you know, a little over a percent, a percent, 22%. But it would be affecting again both 1516 and 1516, at least at this point.
Yeah.
So just, but the good news is I do feel pretty confidently that the, the way things are tracking for 1516, even though we'll have less revenue based on this than we have expected up to this point from the state school fund, that our expenses are also tracking below budget, and we should be somewhere, you know, pretty close to a break-even type of a situation. Pending our 1415 adjustment, which we won't know until about the end of April, that they'll, they do that May reconciliation for the previous year, we don't know what that is yet. So that'll be the one final piece to that.
Something else, and I guess, what, so who sets the, the level of poverty? Is it, is it a federal standard or is it a state standard? Because the reason.
It's a federal, the federal poverty level is a, is a federal.
Right. And, and what we've done in Oregon, and some other states, is that we've raised the minimum wage, which brings people's wages up, but it also raises costs. But, but the feds don't care. So is it, are we just, are we just bumping over that with a certain amount of our, of our, of our families? Are we, are we getting just over that poverty level? But they're, granted, they're making more, but they're spending more too.
It's an on-paper over the poverty level, but it's not an effective.
Right. And so are they aware of that? Are they being, you know, I realize that's, you know.
Me and our state folks?
Yeah.
I'm sure they are. I don't know why they decided that this, I mean, this was probably the only annual metric that was available to them. They wanted to update it more than what they were doing before, but quite honestly, they've created another rollercoaster ride, I don't know.
Yeah, they really have.
Yeah.
All I did, they have taken that consideration somewhat, with some economic variables as determined by the county level, which is why we're feeling the impact on the county level. So L.A., Marion, and Monmouth County felt it most, based upon Steve's research. So I think there's some attempt to be able to balance that out.
To balance, right.
The economic health of your chief.
It just kind of changes that rivalry over a year, and then also after years are almost in the books.
Yeah, and then, and then look back.
Yeah, that's ridiculous.
Double jeopardy.
I see S.K. to hit the jackpot here.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, well, like I said, I ended up doing another couple worksheets and just, you know, these have all the Marion's, but, you know, did all the L.A., and, you know, and again, there's, there's districts and counties that went up, and there's counties that went down. I'm assuming it's probably the same counties that went the opposite tracks, and when the first ones did this, we were, we went up and, you know.
It'd be interesting to know what the state actually gained if you balanced it out the average.
The total, according to Michael Elliott at ODE, was slightly down on a state level, but there were, again, districts that went up, like, like, there were down. It wasn't, you would think that there was a huge statewide drop, but based on what you saw here, based on what I pulled, but it actually was just slightly down, the total statewide compared to the recent year's data. So, yeah, so just a whole nother thing that, I guess, I guess we're noted, go to stay low on this one, and on this particular weight, and wait for that January to come around and see.
Could get even more complicated, interesting, you know, with this new minimum wage law that they just passed, and the more minimum wage goes up, and different minimum wages for different sections of the state, it could be.
This new sick leave law has, has a financial impact on business too. It's all.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, our second topic, board member packet mailing schedule. This is something that Todd kind of brought up at our last general session about how he didn't receive his packet till Monday, and I take it it's happened, you said it's happened more than once?
It's happened two or three times now. So generally, I get it on Saturday, but, so.
Okay.
If, if, if I'm around, if I'm out at the coast fishing or something like that, you know, I'm not going to get it till Sunday when I get back or whatever. I think, you know, my thought is it'd be nice if it came Thursday or Friday or something that way, a little more time to go over the material, and, you know, Monday just, you know. I realize, you know, where I'm at, it goes all the way up to Portland and comes all the way back.
That's perfect.
All that stuff, so.
Even if you're in town, it goes up to Portland.
We can deliver it to the post office, and they assure us that the silver student addresses get delivered sooner, simply because we can deliver it here, but, yeah.
I remember Owen has a post office box, and he was getting, getting his packets late.
Yeah, I think.
It's pretty ridiculous.
Andy, did you have some, some thoughts or some options about early mail, or impacts of earlier mailings?
It feels like you want to address this, you know, that the probably most, the quickest solution with our current model would be to send the packets out the Tuesday prior. And I think that's just really a logistical matter, that we have to orchestrate at the district office. There would be some potential implications with that. I know from a financial standpoint, there were a few months of the year that your financial report would not be provided in your packet, simply because where the date fell, one date does make a difference with financial information at times, because we can get those books right up to the point that we can get them actually with the most current information. So that would be one implication. You know, the, the, the other, to a lesser degree, would be the occasional revised agenda. You get them on occasion, you got one tonight, simply because we made the selection for our maintenance facility director, who is on the agenda there. So, you know, I think it really depends on what you as a board want to do. If we, you want us to send it mailed out on Tuesday, we can mail it out on Tuesday. I don't know how large of an issue this is for all of you, because I don't know when you get your packets. Todd, clearly, I have a couple of gagers that's received it late, and admittedly, I want you guys to get it. You want to get it in sufficient time so you can review it and be fully prepared for your board meeting. So I, I'm going to lean on you, say, how, how large an issue is this, number one? If it is an issue for, for multiple board members, then what would you like this to do? Before you have that conversation, I will share with you that OSBA does offer a surplus, and we've really never looked into it much, where increased electronic communication of board packet, board member information, and information to the public can be, can occur, so you can actually receive your packet electronically in a confidential protected file that the general public can't access. There's a subscription for that, we're looking into that a little bit more, but that, that would change again some logistics of what we have to do with the district office, giving the information out to you electronically. We just have to look at that and find out that there's some merit to us doing that as a district, or whether you want to continue with current practice or us sending it out on Tuesday. So I'll follow your lead.
Well, I, yeah, once in a while, I'll, I'll get mine on, I live in Scotts Mills, and I get mine on, on Monday once in a while too. But as I'm self-employed, I can pick the thing up on Monday, and I can carve out a couple hours in a day and, and look at things. So I don't know how Todd's schedule is, or anybody else's schedule is. It's not an impact to me. But yeah, I, I get mine on Monday once in a while too. So I just, just tossing that out there. But it, but, but for me, it doesn't impact me.
I think I've only had a late one come once, and I was able to react to it.
Yeah, so I, it hasn't been a problem.
I'll send the address.
Yeah.
Does there are school district email, do we have any encrypted file option? Can we send that encrypted?
I, I don't, I don't know. I don't think so, but I don't truly.
Is it district server?
That's the protected encrypted file that I was referring to with this OSBA subscription, if we want to send the information out, and that's called a board book.
Well, I mean, do we even have to go that route? I mean, generally, what, Hotmail, Gmail, I mean, a lot of those have encrypted services where you just put a little caption in the subject, where you send it secure. So rather than having to go through OSBA, maybe there's an option where we can just scan it in and send it encrypted to each one of us?
You may want to look into, into that, because I know that, like, through a lot of the Microsoft Exchange servers, which the district server is, you can do that. I know my, my, my job, same kind of thing, you can put, you know, encrypt in the subject line, and it will encrypt it for you. I just don't know what the capabilities and where the power is on the, on the district one. And I take it our district one's not secure enough just to send it out alone, correct, Andy? Our district, just by attaching it to our district emails, sending it to our district address, it's not secure enough?
It's not secure enough.
Okay, okay.
I personally like a paper packet. I'd be willing to come in and pick it up at the office if that's, it cuts another option.
What if, I mean, what if we tried to do it Tuesday? I mean, try to send it out? If it becomes too much of a hassle, then you can, you can let us know. But if it's not, to your point, going to be too much of a hassle on, on our current, you know, timelines, and maybe during the week, a financial statement has to get emailed out, if that's allowable, and that's a one-up, maybe once, twice a year, let's, let's try that. I don't have a problem with getting it a day earlier. I'd like it. I mean, I travel some, and, you know, it's not necessary for me, as, as I haven't had any problems with my P.O. box, but why not try it? Another extra day is great, if it's not too much.
With update, with email updates?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
We don't care that.
Denise, how's it impact you?
Yeah. I don't want it to kill you.
You would just, you would start a day earlier?
You'd have even more emails to send out.
Yeah, let's give it a go.
Well, I see a lot of hit notes, so.
Yeah, I don't care.
Yeah, if it, yeah, if you guys can, if it's not an impact on you guys, then sure.
And see if it, and Todd, then you can see if making, bringing a day earlier helps the situation, you know? If it doesn't make any difference, and you're still getting the Mondays, then.
But, and to keep it current, if there are updates, send emails so we have the latest information.
Yeah, okay.
You know, yeah, just coming in, you know, isn't, I'm working the same hour as the offices open, so that makes it pretty difficult to, you know.
I think what's important here is that Todd gets his packet on time and not affect his fishing schedule.
Yeah, exactly.
That's true, yeah. Yeah.
I mean, priorities, right?
Maybe he could take it on the boat with him that way.
You know, the only, I, yeah.
Got something in the hotel room, you know?
Yeah.
I just, I just had a random thought, but being, you know, Todd's for some reason at the Woodburn address, it's a little further out, I mean, can you slap a 50 cent, different more posters on his to get it to speed the mail?
Well, I actually have a Mount Angel P.O. box, which is the weird thing about it, is I don't know why, you know.
It's just not.
You could walk back and forth quicker than the mail would come, but.
One would think, it would go from somebody.
We probably did it again too, not overnight, but it's called, there's another level between standard mail and overnight.
Priority.
Priority, yeah.
And the cost was, was pretty expensive.
Okay, then, yeah.
It's like three or four bucks per envelope, I think.
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah. USPS is jacked up their rates.
Yeah. Okay.
They'll try to send it out on Tuesday for a while and see how that affects things. Okay, our mid-year fiscal accounting and reporting, we do this twice a year. I have some questions that I go through and I ask Andy and Steve, and then the last question is personal related, so it needs to be done in executive session. So we'll finish our regular agenda, then move to executive session. So, are the books balanced and reconciled?
Yes.
Does the adopted budget reflect expected expenditures?
Uh, no. I think we talked about this before, general funds fund, the Fund 200, which is grants and instruction, and it contains all of our grants, title, IDU, et cetera, did not include the potential for the collaboration grant, year-two collaboration grant, which we didn't know that we were going to give until just last September. So the, we'll need to bring a supplemental budget forward to be able to have the appropriate authority needed to be able to hold, that's 40,000, I agree. As well as the first debt service payment, debt service fund for the new full faith and credit law, which was not budgeted for when the budget, the budget was created, because that was all kind of happening towards the end of the year with the Schleier in the long run, I think, was adopted in May or June. So, so that was not placed in the budget. So I'll have to bring a supplemental budget forward. I, I, I've already made the order to bring to you, so let's just have the appropriation level needed, which is fast.
Okay, okay.
You, you've experienced supplemental budgets on occasion in the past. They do occur every once in a while, especially when you have unexpected expenditures or revenue changes. In this case, you know, you improved your budget, it may have been adopted in June, and we weren't awarded the grant until September. So, you know, there is, there is some, we should have anticipated that because we, I suppose, knew that we were going to apply for the grant, but we sure had no assurance that it would happen.
For 16-17, I'm just, you know, there's a possibility for year three, if we just put it in, we don't get it, we don't spend it, we don't have the money.
Okay.
Then it ensures that you have the appropriation of the 16-17.
Okay, okay. Okay, are all payroll reports filed and have all payroll liabilities been paid timely?
Yes.
Have all federal and state grant reimbursement requests as well as required financial reporting forms been timely filed?
Yes.
Are there any cases of fraud that we need to be aware of?
No.
Are there any changes in the internal control system?
No.
Okay. Are there any changes in the accounting system or accounting procedures?
No.
Are there any other financial related matters we should be aware of?
Poverty weighting.
Yeah.
We already talked about, because it's a narrative, it's all my matter.
Okay. Are all cash and investment accounts reconciled to the records?
Yes.
Are all financial statements and information provided to the board accurate and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and we'll wait on the last question to go into executive session. Any other discussion items tonight? Anybody have anything? Okay, we have one action item. Approve employment of Lauren Stanley as the new maintenance and facilities director. Effective date to be determined. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and...
Let's see if I may interject before you take the vote. Lauren is with us this evening. Lauren Stanley is sitting right here next to Joel. Lauren is a current maintenance director in the Woodburn School District and comes to us with many years of experience at Woodburn. We're very pleased to have him on, on board and believe that we're going to be able to keep him ahead in a very positive way with Joel's transition out and Lauren coming in. So we're excited.
Okay. I was going to introduce him after we go...
Oh, I apologize. Before you vote on the guy, you need to tell who you are.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, um, been moved to the second. If all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Lauren, do you have anything you want to say or...
I just wanted to thank Superintendent Mondo and the interview committee for selecting me and giving me this opportunity to go to Silver Falls School District, and I'm looking forward to it. And we've got a lot of challenges and a lot of work to do and not a lot of money to do it, so I'll be doing the best I can to pick over where I don't know if Joel was left off and try to make a smooth transition to where we can get these projects completed and get a new school.
Great.